Nine council members, the statements from staff regarding the rezonings have been included in your agenda packet. They are referenced as a blue sheet, but obviously in your agenda packet, they may not be in that step. I think Beverly notified everyone of that.
Mr. Griffith, if he can accept the invitation to be joined as a panelist.
Folks, we're going live. All right, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Officially open our meeting that's being again hosted by the Zoom platform due to the continuing coronavirus today is November 16th, 2021. And this meeting is being streamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page, youtube.com/COBNC. Please note, this meeting is being recorded for tonight's public comments and public hearings to address the council at the appropriate time during this meeting. We ask to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine. If you're joining us via phone, that'll notify our host that you wish to speak and we'll call on you at the appropriate time. If anyone has any technical or connection difficulties tonight, John Vernon is standing by at 336-513-5440. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltutis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Very good. Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Interim assistant city manager Cheryl Brown.
Here.
Police chief Brian Long.
Here.
Director of planning and transportation, Mike Nun.
Here.
Planning manager Conrad O'Meadow.
Here.
Elon fellow Chandler Vaughn.
Here.
Principal planner Jamie Lawson.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. For tonight's invocation, we call on Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Let's bow our heads. Lord, some days we are simply astonished at the beauty of the world you provided for our keeping. The starry nights and the glimmering trees of daytime remind us of our responsibility to care for and be good stewards of our earthly home. We are awed and we thank you. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve you. Give us wisdom, help us deliberate and make decisions that provide for the well-being of our citizens for years to come. Bless our employees and their families, keep them healthy and safe. Bless the homeless, the hungry, and all others among us who suffer tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. With special recognition and proclamation this evening, recognizing Small Business Saturday as November 27th, 2021 this year. We have Chandler Vaughn with us this evening. Chandler, before the proclamation, is there anything you'd like to tell us about Small Business Saturday this year?
Yes, I have a small presentation, if that's all right.
Yes.
I promise that won't take long. So just the kind of quick overview, I'm Chandler Vaughn, the Elon graduate year of service fellow currently serving as the interim downtown manager and economic development project manager for the city. So Small Business Saturday is definitely a tradition here in Burlington and started in 2010. And it was backed by American Express as it continues to today and has eliminated the significance of supporting small independently owned businesses across the country. And Burlington has celebrated Small Business Saturday in downtown districts since its inception in 2010. And Burlington's municipal service district is home to over 90 small businesses. And the Burlington Downcrown Corporation coordinates downtown wide efforts annually as designated neighborhood champions. And the BDC distributes American Express shop small merchandise like masks and bags. Oops. Well, that last slide was going to say that it falls in between Cyber Monday and Black Friday. So it's the perfect time for people to do their Christmas shopping and support small businesses, knowing that it empowers local artisans and circulates money in our local economy, adding jobs to the market. And you get to see unique gifts and cut down on waste that comes from processing and buying from big corporations like Amazon. And these are just the list of a few of our vendors that will be present. We have some artists, some natural products, some soaps. Anything you can really think of, it's a pretty diverse crowd. And it starts from 11 to 3. So you have pretty much all day. And I know that BQ Emporium downtown is also having a small business get together at BQ. So you can check that out while you're downtown. And that same day, we are having a Christmas tree lighting event and that will be at 6:00 PM. So go ahead and mark your calendars. I'm very excited. Also be sure to bring a gift. We were partnering with Christmas cheer so we can go ahead and support the underserved communities and give them food and gifts that they normally wouldn't be able to receive without the assistance of Christmas cheer. And on the same day, the 27th of November, we will begin our holiday decor social media contest. So get your selfies ready and take pictures with the tree and the wreath and submit them on our Instagram or Facebook. There will be a link and make sure to stop by our local businesses for our holiday window decorating contest. And you can take a picture with what's your favorite and submit who's the winner. Thank you. And if you have any other questions, please contact me, sivan@berlinconnc.gov. Promise I'd be short.
Thank you, Chandler. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and quick present this proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturdays, November 27th, 2021. Whereas the city of Burlington, North Carolina celebrates all local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all firms and paid with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of all employees in the private sector of the United States, 88% of US consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas 56% of shoppers report that they shop online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business based on social media recommendations. And whereas Burlington, North Carolina supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. Burlington Downtown Corporation is planning an outdoor artisan market on Saturday, November 27th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. In addition vendors, there will be live music and lots of other Small Business Saturday promotions available at our downtown shops and eateries. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Mayor Ian Baltutis and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday in the city of Burlington and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you, Chandler, and thank you to the Burlington Downtown Corporation for your work promoting our small business merchants and to our small business owners all across our community. Chandler, anything else you want to add today?
That'll be it.
Very good. With that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our code of ethics. This time we'll recognize interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No. All right, before council, our minutes from our September 21st, 2021 city council meeting, our October 5th, 2021 city council meeting and our November 2nd, 2021 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda with additions. Do I hear any motion to approve that agenda as stated?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about these, please let us know. I do want to ask, we, on the travel policy item B, there were some additions to that that we did not discuss in a previous session. Is there any interest in pulling that out as a new business item or is council happy with that on the consent agenda?
I'm good with on a consent agenda. I've been over.
All right, just wanted to check on that. Consent agenda as follows. Item A to approve the proposed regular meeting schedule for 2022 work session and city council meetings. Item B to approve proposed amendments to the city of Burlington travel policy and adopt associated changes to the Burlington City Code of Ordinances. Chapter two administration, division five employee benefits, section 2-247. And chapter two administration, division nine separation disciplinary action and reinstatement, section 2-330. Item C to approve budget amendment 2022-13 to allocate funds received from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council for the purchase of program equipment for outdoor programs at the John Robert Kernodle Senior Center. And item D to approve budget amendment 2022-15 to recognize funding awarded to the Burlington Police Department by the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, otherwise known as JAG. Any questions regarding these or do I hear a motion second to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
I make a motion we approve the foregoing consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. We do have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone property from the medium density residential or M E R zoning district to the planned development or P D zoning district. Property is located at 4183 South Church Street and is referenced as Almans County tax identification 106107 and Guilford County tax identification number 229399. This has been continued from our September 21st, 2021 city council meeting. This time we'll recognize our director of planning and transportation, Mike Nun. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're here before you for a rezoning request. I put a, just a quick Google Earth map up to give you a reference point. I put a PD pin. This is the lot that's in question. It's just between Springwood Church and then University Boulevard in this area. And of course, there's the Almans Memorial Park Cemetery just behind it. Can everybody see the rezoning map?
Yep, we've got that up.
Okay, good. Good evening. Again, this item is requests approximately 1.87 acres from medium density residential to planned development. The planned development zoning requires the applicant to offer improvements in site design features that go beyond the basic UDO requirements. Proposal includes a single structure development with details shown on the planned development concept plan, which was in your packet. And I'll also pull that up at this time. And try to enlarge it just a bit. Everyone see that?
You said on Google Earth, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. About now.
Coming up now. There we go.
It's like the concept plan.
Yeah, we've got the overlay.
Good, good. And you also had that in your packet as well. I just want to point a few things out. It has been approved by the technical review committee and offers several items above the standard UDO requirements to enhance the quality of design and impact of the building. The following items have been offered. They have limited the building to a maximum of 73,300 square feet. They also have limited within that square footage to the building only allowing 80 to 85% of this to self-storage. So rephrase that, only 80 to 85% of this can be used as self-storage. It will have internal access only for that storage. And then the resulting square footage, approximately 15 to 20% would allow for institutional office or commercial uses. That results in about 58,000 square feet for the self-storage and roughly 14,000 square feet for institutional office or commercial. This square footage restriction on the uses limits the traffic impact of the site as compared to something you would see in a traditionally zoned commercial and office use as those typically contribute to increased peak hour and daily trips. The access to the site is limited to a right end, as you see here down here off of Church Street, right in only. And then there will be a full access off of Ashley Woods Drive. And it has also has a dedicated right turn lane, which is already in place, but I just want to point out there's a dedicated right turn lane on the Ashley Woods Drive at this time. Based on comments at the P and Z meeting and comments by council at the work session, as well as public comments we received, we did work with NC DOT beginning in early October to evaluate the intersection of Ashley Woods Drive and Church Street for any needed traffic signal or other mitigation measures. The city collected traffic data and we provided that information to NC DOT for their use. And as you're familiar with with any type of traffic signal with NC DOT, there are warrants that must be met before a signal can be installed. And based on their October 29th memo, which is in your packet as well, speaks to that, they reviewed that data and determined that at this time, there was not going to be a traffic signal warranted with existing traffic or with the traffic that was going to be added by this site. That does not mean that it will not be evaluated as time goes on and is with any intersection that we have in the city, we work with NC DOT to monitor that. The applicant also has offered to install sidewalk along both Church Street and Ashley Woods Drive. And also provided a public right of way segment here at the corner for public use in the future. This could possibly be a gateway sign or any other public improvement that is needed. And that's just again, public water rate that was provided for that. There's no infrastructure involved there. To reduce visual clutter along the corridor, the entire site is limited to one ground sign where the UDO would allow two to be installed. So it'd be one ground side for this site. Landscape buffers and streetscape planning are required as shown on this concept plan. You would have landscaping and buffers around the entire site. The applicant has offered to increase the caliper size of all new trees from two inches to two and a half inches. As well, those were canopy trees and also the understorey trees would go from two, would be two inches instead of one and a half. They would also be able to screen the views from the streetscape and also the rear property line back in this area. I want to pull up the elevations now just to give you a, hopefully this will stop share before I do that. And then share it again. The elevations are also in your packet as well. I just wanted to put them on the screen. Did that work? Are you still seeing the site plan?
We have the elevations now.
Okay, good. Thank you. Use of glass exterior. You see, this is the entry point of the building versus a flat wall surface along the storefront is being offered with enhanced entry tower. You see this here with the glass and the roof line as a focal point for the building. As you can see, the building elevations here have been provided. And I do want to note that due to the self-storage use, you don't see windows at the top or on the second story of this building. But where possible, as you can see along the storefront, they've used integrated glass, another, you know, design features to enhance that, that view. They did, the applicant did state that they plan to operate between 10:00 and 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM for the self-storage and that they would have a management office on site to assist with the storage unit area. Most of the parking, if you recall, on the site plan is oriented towards Church Street and away from the rear property line. The dumpsters will also be screened and masonry, use masonry to screen those. The lighting also is required by the UDO to be downward facing and designed for minimal impact beyond the property lines. The applicant indicated, and they're here this evening, they can speak to this, they had a neighborhood meeting at the YMCA on October 16th to review the proposal and advise the staff that several residents attended and provided input on the concept plan. The Church Street corridor is commercial in nature, as we all know, and continues to redevelop with a mix of residential and non-residential uses similar to those requested in this planned development. The comprehensive land use plan calls for the area to be suburban residential. While the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use plan, the property scope and scale is limited by the planned development uses and square footage, as well as being contiguous to the commercial development along South Church Street. As I mentioned prior, the applicant has also provided several items that exceed the UDO requirements and bring a higher quality site for the planned development request. At the July 26th meeting, the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request. City staff also recommend approval with the consistency statement shown as option two in your handout. To date, public comments have been received and provided to city council members. Staff presented this request at the August 16th, 2021 work session and at the September 21st city council meeting. And as the mayor mentioned, it was requested to be delayed until this evening. The applicant, Mr. Adam Parker and his team are here tonight to present and answer any additional questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker and your team, if are there any comments you'd like to make before we begin the public hearing? And I will note that you will have a chance to respond to any questions that do come up in the public hearing from council afterwards.
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor and city council for just your time tonight. And Mike, I really appreciate you presenting the project and all the city's hard work and work, you know, going through the UDO with us, explaining what we need to do to make this fit the area. We have spent a lot of time, a lot of effort doing the research, really trying to enhance that part of Burlington entering into the city and into the county. Winning this not lighthearted, it was very much a business decision. My personal business will be in this building. So it does take on a personal nature for myself. Feel like it'll bring some additional tax revenue to the city that is always needed, necessary. While also really improving that corner lot and showing some continuity with the commercial property next to it. So really spent a lot of time here to answer any questions. We have our site engineer, our architect, project manager and traffic study engineer here to also answer any questions. And that's why we also asked for the delay. We felt like, we know the city ran a traffic study, but we felt like it was our due diligence to run our own to make sure that the numbers did match up and that we were not going to have a drastic impact on the traffic at that intersection. I think again, Mr. Earl can allude to that a little bit more if there's any questions, but we kind of came to the same conclusion as the city and the DOT. We should have a very low impact, if any at all. Part of the reason why I chose this type of construction was for that reason. Felt like with all the growth on Church Street between Burlington and Witsit, there's going to be a great demand for more commercial property, more storage. I think there's going to be additional homes built back Ashley Woods Drive. And we just feel like there needs to be some additional business opportunities in that vicinity. While also understanding that the current zoning would have been very difficult to make it worthwhile and justifiable and make it look normal in that area, seeing that it backs up to a cemetery. Which I think the cemetery also provides a nice buffer between the neighborhood and this project. We've been in contact with the owner of the cemetery. They are in agreeance with it. They've also even mentioned about us trying to improve their other lot next to us as it has a lot of down trees and things like that. So we're going to take that upon ourselves to try to just improve that entire corner for all the residents and also just all the businesses that could be coming there. So again, here to answer any questions and feel very confident that we're here to do the right thing and hope that everybody can agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
No problem.
All right, with that, we will begin our public hearing unless council has any questions for Mike or Mr. Parker. All right, so again, this is a public hearing. If anyone present wishes to speak regarding item number one, this rezoning on our agenda, we ask to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. If anyone is having any connection difficulties or other technical difficulties, John Vernon is standing by at 336-513-5440. So again, this is our public hearing for item one on the agenda. If you wish to speak, use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us by phone. We'll take just a moment to see if anyone is chiming in. Beverly, do we have any additional written public comments that were submitted?
There were 17 emails written comments that were received for September 21st public hearing and they were carried over. And they'll be included in the record for this public hearing. There has been one email written comment received since that hearing that would be included in the record for this public hearing. All of the comments have been provided to city council.
Thank you, Beverly. All right, we've received no comments or requests for public comment at this point. I'm going to do a last call for public comments. Again, raise hand through Zoom window or use the star nine if joining us via phone. So a couple raise hands come through. All right, at this time, I have a user with the name Kathy DJ. This time, if you'd like to speak, you have time for your public comment.
Yes, thank you. I had communicated prior to the previous meeting scheduled for September, the comments that I rendered at that time, I still stand behind the comments. I hope that some members of the council have taken the opportunity to visit the site in question to understand the topography and issues that some of the citizens have raised around the type of commercial construction that's proposed there. I do think that as well, some of the information that we have recently received in the last week regarding the traffic studies, I would request that the council still continue to defer a decision on this until further and additional research can be done around those traffic studies. They were just shared last week. And also I would say that we were not advised that this was on the calendar for this month. So I'm sure that there are other people who would like to offer additional insights regarding the traffic in the study done by the DOT that were not aware that this meeting was occurring. Thank you.
Kathy, if you could just state your full name and address for the public record.
Yes, it's Donna Kathy. And I live at 194 Balmoral Court in Burlington. I'm in the Waybridge community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, any further comments? Again, use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us via phone. Looks like we have an additional request.
Yes.
Hi, this is Rebecca.
Yes. Rebecca Colt.
Rebecca Colt Turner. I live in the courtyards of Ashley Woods. My address is six, three, eight Ashley Woods Drive, Gibsonville.
Thank you very much. If you could share your comment?
So I've been at a number of citizen meetings. I've talked to a lot of our residents. Aside from the fact that this is going to be a three-story building with lights and it will increase traffic. I have a lot of concerns about the traffic going on to Ashley Woods, especially when it is backed up and trucks or individuals are trying to turn left. If they can't turn left, they're going to turn right into Ashley Woods. And the other concern is that I don't believe whatever studies were done traffic-wise have been done at all times of the day. Our main concern is the left turn going on to Church Street. The visibility, first of all, cars go by there at over fifty miles an hour. We are expected without a light to be able to cross three lanes of traffic and turn left. Oncoming cars from the left cannot see us. There's a hill rise there. If you haven't gone by to look at that, you can easily just accept what the D O T is saying. The problem is that's not our reality. In three of our communities, we have a significant number of over sixty-five elderly people who still drive safely. But my concern and others' concern is that if this goes forward and construction starts, for instance, without a change like a light, we are going to have traffic accidents. The safety of our citizens is very important to me. And I just want to agree with Kathy. I think this needs to be postponed for the decision. We need more time to look at these traffic studies. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Again, we are continuing the public hearing for item one. And if any additional folks wish to speak, we ask to use the raise hand button in your window or star nine if joining us via phone. The last call for comments regarding item one. I see another raised hand. A good moment for Scott to get them.
Ms. Mackey, please. There you go.
Yes, my name is Angela Mackey. I live in the courtyards at Ashley Woods. My address is one, eight, five, Bon Haven. I would like to echo the comments of the previous caller as regards the need for a traffic light. I have sat there trying to make that left turn onto Church Road. It's, it's, it's difficult enough with the current volume of traffic. People do travel that road at high rates of speed. And there, there is a rise there and visibility is not always clear. And I do think that a traffic light is needed. I don't, I, what I know of the study that's been conducted, it was very limited. Somebody at four thirty one afternoon. And I just think that that's woefully insufficient to make a decision based on that limited study. So I again echo the concerns of the, the previous caller.
Thank you, Angela. Any further comments? We ask to use the raise hand button in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us via phone. And again, if anyone is having a technical or connection challenges, John Vernon is available at three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. Last call for public comments. All right. Our host has indicated there are no further comments. Counsel, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
A second, Ed.
Motion to close made by council member Butler, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those, myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Public hearing on item one is now closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion or any council questions regarding the discussion.
Mayor, if, if I could just ask Mike and Nolan in reference to the D O T traffic study, could you give us a little more in, that was a traditional study based on this particular project. Is that not correct? Or can you give us some background information on that?
Yes, sir. That's, I mean, typically a traffic signal warrant is based on, you know, nationwide standards to do that. There was nothing different operated. Brian Tennant's here tonight. He was key coordination with N C D O T. As I said, we collected the data for them over a twelve-hour period. We did that on September twenty-third. And that's, that's our normal approach or your normal approach when you start a signal warrant. But Brian, if you want to speak to the other factors like safety and accidents, that'd be helpful.
Yes, sir. So we, we looked at it from a twelve-hour standard. Typically, if there is a crash pattern with accidents, that's also taken into account. There was none showing severity to focus on needing a traffic signal at this time based on any kind of crash pattern history or based on just looking at peak hours. So your A M, P M traffic, as well as we studied with the trip distribution for analyzing the Parker Center would bring during the A M, the P M peaks and it didn't trigger our T I A as well as any other factors that we would normally consider for a signal.
And we, we worked, we sent that information to D O T. As you know, that's their roadway and we coordinate them on all intersections. You know, the cases that, that look at those warrants, that's what they use as a standard to install the signal. So there may be peak hour needs or like was mentioned before, rightly so. Realistically, what's out there, you know, when drivers pull up to make right or left turns. But until that volume or thresholds met, D O T doesn't, doesn't approve installation of a signal. Doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. It just means currently the traffic that's there and with the site traffic did not push it over those thresholds.
Mayor, I have a question of Mike. Mike, I, let's assume the, you know, the zoning passes and we, the traffic, I, I clearly believe it's going to increase the traffic and I've been out there. It's I don't know. It's just a dangerous situation at times for sure. My question is if the zoning is adopted, when can it be looked at again as far as traffic? Because I think eventually, at least I would hope, I think eventually there's going, there would be a need for a light there. So my question again is, when would it be looked at? Can it be initiated by the jointed landowners? Does the city have to do it? What's the, what's the procedure?
No, we would definitely keep it. And you know, now this has been identified just with the zoning and also with the traffic study we did, it's something that we can look at it again. And as I mentioned, early October is when we started working with D O T and by the end of the, by November sixteenth, we've got, we've gotten some information and analysis back from them. So it's something that, that can be done fairly, fairly reasonable in time. So I mean, it's not something you have to wait years to do. So I, there's no real standard of when it could be done again. Once it's, once it's in operation. If other things develop out there, you know, anything that would cause additional traffic, I think, you know, our department would look at that with the N C D O T and say, let's evaluate this again.
Okay, well, good. Thank you. I, I didn't, I didn't, I really wasn't familiar with the procedure. But anyway, let's, let's assume this is a, it's adopted. I would, I would certainly ask that we'd keep an eye on it because I, I really truly believe it's going to need a light there at some point. And there will be some additional traffic, you know, with the new development. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mike.
I agree. Thank you.
Butler, I think you had a question too.
Yeah, thank you. Kind of along the same lines, I've been out there on several occasions myself. You know, do we know as a percentage of the trips at that intersection, what, do we know what percentage this is going to add? I mean, obviously there's some concern from the residents about left turn lane, a, a left turn there. This project's not going to have any impact on that because that traffic's already flowing east and west or, or, or north and south on Church Street, however you look at it. However, there is a fair amount of traffic that's already been created there. Do, do we look at what this petitioner is going to create? Because based on what I've looked at, it's going to be very minimal as a percentage of what the total trips are.
Yes, sir. We looked at that. It's, it's less than five percent. This site would develop typically around three percent for this site traffic.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Parker, if, if gave him the opportunity, I think he has a traffic response as far as his data goes. He has a traffic, his traffic consultants here too, if he has different information. But we were, we, our information provided less than five percent for this development.
And that's what I looked at. That's what I read. And I just wanted to be sure I looked at that correctly.
Okay.
Could, could Mr. Parker speak to that with his traffic engineer, Mike?
Yes, sir. They're on the call. Earl.
Hey, there again. I would, I'm going to pass that over to Earl for now. And if you have any more questions for me, I can answer after he kind of gives his assessment.
Sure. Happy to answer the question. We, we did conduct a, our own independent traffic signal warrant study using the volumes that we obtained from the city's study as well. We collected our own data and found actually a little bit lower volumes than were reported in those, but we used the higher ones in our study and concluded the same thing that a signal's not warranted at this time, nor with the additional traffic added by this project. That this project is a load trip generator. To, to answer the specific question, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation Manual, which is what we use to determine impacts and thresholds for traffic study. This project will only add less than two percent to that intersection. As I said, we, we performed a signal warrant study, found that it's not warranted with the existing traffic or the traffic added by this site. We presented that finding and report to D O T. I happened to speak with District Engineer Chuck Edwards the other day. He indicated that he did agree with, with that assessment. The only thing I'll add is we, I actually went out and observed traffic for a couple of hours during a day in addition to the traffic volume counts that we did.
Thank you, Earl.
Thank you.
Mike, also, one of the comments that, during public comments, talked about lights could, could, and, and also as a, just a matter of explanation, we've had a few of these planned developments come before us now. And would the, the lighting of this project be considered part of the planned development or what did the U D O handle that? But explain again how the lighting's going to be on this project.
Yes, the light is going to be required. That's part of the U D O item. That's not really a P D request or enhancement. It's already required to be downward facing and away from property lines and, and to contain that light and that projection within the property line. So that is a U D O requirement for the, for the lighting for the entire site.
And Mike, with that being said, in terms of landscaping on the site itself, that's also part of the requirements in terms of looking at the project.
It is. And again, I'll let Mr. Parker speak to his intentions for the tree preservation. And just to add, we, the, the U D O does allow credit and, which encourages developers to keep those trees on site because trees are costly. But I'll let Mr. Parker speak to, to his landscaping and, and buffering plans.
Absolutely. Yeah, we would love to keep as many trees as possible. Like you said, it's a cost factor. We have kind of determined with our civil engineer Blair, which he can also allude to a little more depth. Some of the trees along the front inside of Ashley Woods, it's going to be very difficult to keep those just because of having to cut down the land to get everything level, putting in a sidewalk on both streets. We have agreed obviously to plant larger caliber trees to try to mitigate the trees that we do have to take down. I'm a tree guy. I love having big trees, so I don't want to take them down. However, with moving land, having to have the right number of parking spaces and honestly, just the other landscaping requirements in the buffers, we have been able to shift the building a little bit to expand those buffers. But Blair can probably speak to this a little bit more. Landscaping on the backside also though, we are doing an environmental retention pond. It's not meant to hold water, so we're not going to have a pond. It'll be like a sod. Grass looks similar to what's on University Drive with the new construction across from, I think it's Firestone. So we've really tried to enhance beyond what the U D O required. That's not just to meet the city requirements. That's again, a personal thing for me. I take a lot of pride in this and I wanted this to stand out as honestly one of the nicest corner lots in Burlington. So Blair, I'll let you, you know, speak more on the technical side with the land development.
Certainly. Thank you, Adam. So as Adam pointed out, we, we have been directed as we go through full construction plan, design development on the plans to identify and try to save any trees that we can. There is quite a bit of grade change across the parcel. So with the sidewalk and the street fronters that we've got, we don't anticipate being able to save the trees along the road. But we're looking for opportunities down the side property lines and rear property lines. The, the stormwater treatment facility that, that Adam referred to is going to be a bio-retention basin. That's the intent for that. It will have an infiltration. So at most times, it will look like a grass lawn style. In large storms, it will fill up and drain down in, in a seventy-two hour period, seventy-two to hundred and twenty hour period is the requirement for that drawdown.
Let me ask a follow-up question on that, Blair.
Yes.
When I looked at that, there is a line of what I think are thujas, a fir tree all the way down Ashley Woods Drive that are between, it's between the street and the existing trees. Do they, is that part of what would have to go away? Just seems like an existing nice buffer. And that's the complaint that I heard from any number of people who emailed me.
Yes, ma'am. And I believe, and, and unfortunately we don't have a detailed plan, but the sidewalk in that right of way, I believe those, those cypress or evergreens were planted along the right of way, right at that edge. I think they will be disturbed. At least the root zones and grading will, will probably deem those to not be able to be saved. But we, we're, we're certainly not aiming to remove them for the sake of removing them. So i- if there is opportunity for saving them, we will.
Other council questions?
No, I think it's one of the things that's important to notate. We've had a lot of discussion about the, the unique features that the petitioners added in some of the studies that's been done. And that's the beauty of planned development. That's what it's there for as opposed to M D R, somebody coming in and, and just taking an existing zoning. A lot of these discussions wouldn't even be had with buffering and A lot of these discussions wouldn't even be had with buffering and landscaping other than what's in the UDO, but that planned development requires an elevated, as Mike Nun mentioned, an elevated level of attention by the, by the, uh, project itself. So, um, I, I applaud everyone for the work that they've put forth here, um, with this planned development concept.
Do have a question for staff regarding this. I know we've, the evaluation's been for a stoplight or not a stoplight, but having spent some time out there and tried to make turns as the residents have, have indicated, it, it does end up as challenging based on the curvature of the road, the gradients and the crests over there, uh, as well as the speed of traffic. Um, I would just ask, should this get approved for staff to kind of look for alternatives in that gradient up to a stoplight? Um, working with our partners at DOT, just to see what else can be done, because it is a fairly wide stretch of pavement, as I think, uh, one of the residents indicated, and it can make it very challenging with the speed of traffic coming around there to, to cover that ground, especially leaving some of the, the driveways with some, some slope to them. So, uh, recognizing, you know, traffic lights are not the one and only solution to traffic. Um, and so looking for some other creative options there as they present themselves would be, would be appreciated.
We can do that.
I have one more question. If, if this were to remain, uh, medium density, what could be built there? Uh, and, and it's, uh, go ahead. I mean, any, any, people have objected to the three stories. And it seems to me that you could, if somebody wanted to stay with the uh, existing zoning, they could still build three-story houses or apartments or townhouses or something like that. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am. That allows, it allows, the UDO allows 50 feet in height, I believe. Uh, some of the uses under MDR could be a daycare, a community center, a church, uh, a school. Um, also could have, of obviously, a residential there, uh, duplex, triplex apartments, or even single-family homes. Uh, from a residential standpoint, we've looked at just generally at the site, there's type of issues with it. You could probably get seven to 10 townhomes or duplexes, multifamily units on the site if you were to do residential. But there are other uses that are allowed that are non-residential uh, under MDR, which I mentioned. So that could go in there by right. You are correct.
Any other council questions on this? Council has been provided with, uh, sample motions from staff, uh, in your agenda. Unless there are further questions, I will entertain a motion from council.
Mayor, I, I make a motion. First of all, I, I'd visit the site, um, uh, Monday afternoon about 4:45 to 5 o'clock. Uh, and then, uh, this morning, uh, between 7:45 and 8:15 and really trying to hit traffic times, what I thought might be the highest traffic situations. The residents are correct about the, the curvature of the road is a challenge. There's no question about turning left there. I mean, I think we all have to admit to that. But the, the concept of, of what we've done here with the UDO, uh, I, I think the amount of, uh, effort that's been put forth by the staff and by the developer to make something work here in, in a doable manner is something that we ought to honor. So with that being said, um, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to approve the request to rezone from medium-density residential MDR to planned development PD district. Property is located on the northeast corner of South Church Street and Ashleywood Road as addressed as 4183 South Church Street and referenced as Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 106107 and Guilford County Tax Identification Number 229399. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map, section four, land use of the comprehensive plan in that it costs this area to have residential uses, the planning and zoning commission finds that the request is compatible with the adjacent commercial and residential uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls residential uses in that area, and the request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area itself. So I make that motion.
Thank you, council member. Do I hear a second to the motion to approve as inconsistent with the land use plan and amend the land use plan?
Second.
Motion has been put forth by council member Owen to approve as inconsistent with land use plan to amend land use plan and seconded by council member Butler. Any questions from council regarding the motion? There are no questions. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. To Mr. Parker and your team, we appreciate you joining us here. We appreciate your desire to invest in our community. And, uh, as mentioned in our discussions, we look forward to working together with you to address concerns uh, around this property. So it makes it a, a benefit and a service to our community going forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, City Council. And I, maybe that's precedent for more PD developments in the future.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add, Mr. Parker and all of us, we, you know, the, the city, uh, over the years has had a, a, a very cooperative relationship with DOT. Uh, I, I, I don't see that changing whatsoever here now with state DOT. I'm, I'm confident that they will continue to take a look at this and determine if indeed that a traffic light is required. Um, and I, I say that, uh, certainly, I'd ask Nolan and Mike if they would agree with that, that, that statement.
Yeah, for sure. Yes, they, they've been very helpful.
New Division Engineer, Ryan Archer, has, uh, has been good to work with, so. So good about that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to public hearing number two on our agenda, which has been scheduled to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for Zero Hanford Road. This is a contiguous voluntary annexation. This time we'll recognize our principal planner, Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening. I'm going to, uh, go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see the annexation map that I've pulled up?
We have that map up now.
Great, thanks. Uh, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Um, staff received a petition for voluntary annexation for Zero Hanford Road, which is contiguous to the current city limits along Hanford Road. The annexation request satisfies condition number six of the conditional uh, rezoning associated with Maccah, Mizziede burial grounds, which required annexation of the parcel far to any NCDOT driveway permit issuance for PID 131303. That's the property that's identified as, uh, C1 on the map. There's no development being proposed at this time and no utilities being requested. This is a standalone annexation, voluntary annexation request within the city's purview for consideration. At the November, November 1st, 2021 work session, the item was presented. Uh, a resolution to set a date of public hearing was approved on November 2nd, and staff recommends approval of this annexation request as the property is contiguous to existing city limits and is within the light industrial zoning district. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions from council regarding this request? All right. This is a public hearing. So at this time, we will entertain comments from the public. We asked you to use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us via phone. And again, we're accepting comments for item two on our agenda, annexation ordinance for Zero Hanford Road contiguous voluntary annexation. If anyone's having any technical or connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. Take just a moment. If anyone wishes to comment, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine. I'm waiting for that. Beverly, do we have any written comments that were submitted for this?
There were no written comments received for this public hearing.
Thank you. Not seeing any requests, but a last call for any public comments regarding item two under our public hearings. All right, hearing, no requests for public comments. So I hear a motion from council to close public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close made by Mayor Protem Kathy Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Public hearing is now closed on this item. Do I hear a motion and second from council regarding action on Zero Hanford Road?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the annexation ordinance for Hanford Road contiguous voluntary annexation.
Second.
Motion to approve the annexation made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions from council regarding this approval motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. This concludes our public hearings for this evening. We have one item of new business. City Council will consider item number three, approving a request from Burlington Police Department to authorize three new police service specialists, level 18 positions and one new police public information specialist, level 27 position. This time we'll recognize our police chief, Brian Law. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. On November, on November the 11th, I sent a memo to the manager and requested the opportunity to speak to you and request these positions. This is a part of a strategy, uh, that should address our retention and recruitment issues. Uh, in my prior role as assistant chief, I was paying close attention with other staff members uh, on exit interview data, uh, when folks, uh, had chose to leave the agency. One of the things that they were focused on was the call volume, and they made that, uh, clear to us that that was, uh, or has been an issue in the past. And, um, since becoming chief, it's, I've been, I've made that a priority uh, of the agencies to begin addressing the workplace environment. Uh, we're doing that not only through, uh, this request, but all through, also through changes of processes within the department. The request that we've made is to authorize, uh, us to post and begin the hiring process for three positions in our records division. Uh, those, uh, positions would be considered, uh, his, I guess what we have called, uh, historically as telesurf positions, which would allow for the processing of reports, uh, through our records division. The reports that would be taken by that group would be, uh, what would be considered lower-level offenses and, uh, certainly not crimes in progress. At this point, we have no interest in being, uh, reducing the services that we provide to the community, but have to look at alternative ways to provide that same low, level of service in a slightly altered way. We believe these three positions will allow for us, uh, to recapture some of the time that's being spent, uh, by patrol officers and highly trained law enforcement officers in the field taking some of these, uh, reports. The one position in addition to the three already requested is for a police public information specialist. Uh, as I think most folks or council members and the mayor are aware, for years I had occupied the public information, um, chair here at the police department. And, um, nationally, there is a very strong, uh, trend, uh, really generated and geared towards continuing to be even more transparent with the public. And we believe that by onboarding this position and allowing it to work with, uh, all the departments and divisions throughout our police department, and then also being very focused on working with the community, that we can increase and ensure transparency, uh, continues. I'm ready to answer any additional questions you might have, but would appreciate any consideration in allowing us to move forward in filling these positions is a very important part of, uh, getting started under new leadership here at the department to create a better workplace environment for sworn staff.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions regarding this item of new business?
Chief, I've got, uh, first of all, I want to commend you out of the gate for, for really, uh, addressing workplace environment. Uh, that's key in, in retention and will, will go a long ways in the recruitment piece as well. Um, as you're looking at these telesurf positions or, or what you historically referred to, um, lower-level reports and that sort of thing, um, is there any way to give a quantitative idea of how this is going to help our, our field enforcement officers, our sworn physicians?
Yes, sir. Uh, before making the request, we had reached out to some of our, um, partnering agencies in the state. Uh, in some cases, they've seen as much of a 20, uh, 20% uh, reduction in the calls being having to processed in the field, uh, which we think out of 9,000 calls a year, uh, can be quite a significant number here in Burlington. It would make a significant impact.
So if, if mentally, if I've got this right, by what these individuals are going to be doing, it would be the equivalent of adding sworn officers out in the field, even though we've got the same amount that we have now. But I mean, you're freeing up their time to do more.
Yeah, so we're, we're not, we're not reducing the services to the public. We're still have the capacity to take each and every report that needs to come into the department and be processed. We're just not using a uniformed and a, a uniformed officer in the community, uh, responding to those calls physically. Um, but that also frees up additional opportunities for our officers to focus on violent crime, um, do proactive police work and do community policing. So, um, we're hopeful that we can reach that 20% number. We have, uh, chosen not to uh, implement this, uh, upon council approval, but we've already used some existing staff to go ahead and start, uh, doing some of the work and beta testing it. But quite honestly, we're just adding additional duties on top of the, the already existing staff, and we know that that won't last, uh, forever. Uh, so this request would, in a full-time capacity, allow us to meet this objective.
Gotcha.
And, and Mr. Butler, I may, I may add to that too, on the public information officer, that literally puts one more police officer back in the field.
Yeah.
That's a police officer that can now be assigned to patrol, be over to sign wherever the chief needs that person and keeps them out of the office doing, uh, office-based work.
Ron, back to the public information officer, uh, position. It's a reality here then, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure you haven't written a, a job description. You're looking, uh, this position would not be based on, uh, a, 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 a police officer itself. This could be just uh, a, one of a public information, a professional, uh, dealing with police matters. Is that, is how you foresee going forward with this?
Yes, sir. That, that's right. Uh, in a perfect world, what we'd like to do is, uh, find someone that's currently got some experience with, uh, media markets or either televised media, uh, bring them into our agency. It'd be great if we could find one that also had law enforcement experience, uh, but that, that may not be, uh, right out of the gate an option. Uh, but we believe with the experience they've had as, it, within media, that that will also help us in uh, our increase in our abilities and capacity to communicate externally uh, with media and with the community. So, um, this is an important strategy. I mean, the, the media, local media certainly, uh, continues to uh, cover police matters. Uh, but I believe we can expand that through the social media uh, and through other avenues with this personnel and staff and really do a good job of being transparent with the community uh, very frequently and, and in a, in a meaningful way.
Yeah, it also, if I'm not, if I'm not misunderstanding you, the individual who would be in your previous position, this was free that person up to do more quote-unquote professional police work than the time that you dedicated to that position in terms of public information. Is that, is that a correct statement to be made?
Yeah, I think the accurate statement is, is I started that probably at the rank of lieutenant and then became more involved as captain and then continued that into my, my assistant chief chair. Part of that was desire. I, I enjoyed that aspect of the work. Um, but it's been misplaced, uh, with the assistant chief and captain level for quite some time, and this gives us an opportunity um, to bring on a professional staff member, non-sworn, free up that, uh, sworn, sworn time and redeploy that, that same, um, time or investment back into a sworn capacity to increase our ability to respond law enforcement.
Thank you.
Also forgot to mention what I think may be an important part. There's no, um, budgetary impact to current year budget, uh, through these requests. Um, in any future budget, um, concerns would be addressed in the 2223, but I have the ability in my current budget to onboard these position without any, uh, additional funding request.
Thank you, Chief. Any other council questions regarding this item? All right. Do I hear a motion from council regarding new business item three?
Hold on one second, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was muted. Um, I'm presuming that this would have some sort of impact on the, uh, city public information office as well. Because I know that they have certainly done, um, work for the police department. So there'd have to be some cooperation there, I would think. I'm sure you've considered that.
We have. We've had multiple conversations already with the manager, Morgan Lassiter and John Vernon to a degree as to the, I think there's mutual benefit for onboarding this position here at the police department, but also not allowing that position to become disconnected from our city communications team. But I believe that, I don't want to speak for her, I believe she's on the call, but I believe the additional position would be welcomed both on the city side and allow first staff to focus on some of the city projects that are broader than just police.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Keith Long and I have had a couple of preliminary conversations about how this role might interface with our department and the work that we do. So I feel confident that we'll continue to work and get a plan together to make sure that that position doesn't become siloed and can be supported by our department as well. So it's good, it's good support for us as well to kind of have that in the organization and start building that comms team across the organization.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Mayor, I would certainly recommend that we approve this, this request authorized in the police department to proceed with allocating three new police service specialist positions and one of the new, one new public information specialist position in the police operations.
Now, second. Motion to approve made by council member Warren Owen, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed? Motion is passed with those myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members, Ward, Butler and Owen. This concludes our regular agenda items for today. This time we move to our general public comment period. If anyone present on the call wishes to speak during the general public comment about items not listed on the agenda, now is your opportunity. You can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us via phone. Again, if you have any technical or connection difficulties, John Vernon is standing by at 336-513-5440. Take just a moment for general content of a comment. Seeing no requests, last call for public comment. All right, we proceed to city council comments. Council members, anything to include in this evening?
I have something, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Alamance Chamber meeting conference today and I was listening to the presentation from the education area, which was Dr. Gatewood, Gene Radegan-Rohr, Carrie Thiel from Partnership for Children, as well as last year's, or I guess it's this year's teacher of the year from Hallfield's ABSS school. And one of the things that they talked about was the effort that it took for families and kids to get through the pandemic, which we all, we all know and we've all read about the kinds of impacts of not being able to find childcare or not being able, because your children were home and you had to go to work, but there are issues in the whole system in terms of taking care of children. And what they asked was that we look as an organization, and they asked all members of the chamber to look at this about what our family policies are, of how we, how we help families, I guess, get through this kind of crisis. And I know we did a lot with our own employees trying to make sure they had childcare. But are there some issues that we have in our own family policies that we could look at? And I'm asking if the council would agree to have the staff look at those policies to review them and see if there's anything that we should be rethinking in terms of how we can help our own employees manage when there are young children involved.
No, I agree with Kathy 100%. When we were talking about the tuition reimbursement changes and I met with city manager to go over that and try to get some clarification on it, I brought that very subject up with regard to recruitment and retention in this new era. One of the other things that we've seen with COVID-19 and the amount of people leaving the workforce to take care of children that just are not going to reenter the workforce because of that, it's really compressed our ability to hire and sometimes retain good people. But I agree, I could not agree more, Kathy. I think we should look at that in a larger capacity. And I think Harden, you had indicated that there were already some thoughts and ideas that had been floated about, but I agree, it's time to take a close look at that.
I agree with that well.
Yeah. It would be interesting, obviously, the city has, has gone through a number of modifications of childcare, whether it was beginning years ago with after-school recreation programs, but I think what we're talking about now is more than just after-school programs itself. It might be more, more complex. I mean, the issue that I would certainly ask already Mr. Laws to, to look into is if there was a what would be involved by, by state regulations in terms of a childcare program that the city itself might want to provide for its own employees. I think we get into some, some sensitive issues there in terms of not only the, the training, but also the facilities that might be required, but at least I think it would be a minimum. We could explore what some of the options might be or whether the city is involved or whether contractually with other people. Because let's be honest, certainly we need these kids taken care of and also we need the employees to be able to work. So it's a dual purpose thing here. And we may really have to think outside the box to try to make this work long-term.
Well, we did have a childcare center and we decided that was not the business that we wanted to be in just recently, but I think the pandemic has taught us a lot about flexibility and ways for us to be more flexible, especially with parents with young children.
But the question I'd have though, Kathy, is that again, and this may have changed, but, but, but Mr. Laws would need to check with the state in terms of certifications of what we could do and what we can't do about particular certifications and requirements by, by the state. There might, I'm not sure if there's been any modifications due to the pandemic or not, but certainly I think we just need to be open to how we can, can help so many of these young parents. Look, I'm gonna be like a personal story here. I've got, I've got a wife that retired from driving to Winston-Salem five days a week to quickly becoming grandparent driving to Raleigh three days a week with young children, grandchildren, working parents. And it's a, it's a stressful situation for those parents that I don't think anyone can imagine until you go through it. Many of us don't go through that, not just for childcare, but you know, how to get kids to school when they have to go to work early and, and delayed bus schedules now and things and all the teacher workdays and so forth. All these very needed opportunities through the education system does create challenges for the parent who's working, both, both parents. Some of those challenges can be met with certain type programs that probably would not require state certification and some can't. So I think this is a bigger picture item that needs to be looked at broadly and, and, and with staff time to come back with some, some ideas of how we may could could reach out and help as many of these young parents as we can.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, council members, because it's, it's something that we're seeing more of. There, there are lots of people in childcare who left the workforce and they haven't returned. And so as a result, the available seats in daycares and programs like that just aren't there. And I think the conversation we had a couple of years ago about the facility at Fairchild was a very different one to what you're bringing up today, which is the idea of including as an employee benefit to, to keep folks on staff or help them be able to take a job with the city and help them to be able to have the capacity to be there when our residents need their skills as a city employee and childcare becomes a barrier. So I appreciate you bringing that up because it is something that all employers, public and private, are struggling with. And to Kathy, your point, it's that, that whole, how do we support the whole family? So thank you for, for bringing that up. I would definitely support that and y'all continuing that work going forward.
Thank you.
Other council comments? Just want to take a moment, my last full meeting with y'all on the council, and just thank you for the ability to serve with you all over the past six years now in this term as mayor. It's been an honor as a young leader in our community, as a young entrepreneur in Burlington to, to serve in this, this stance, in this role. I've done a lot of work with kids in our community, a lot of third graders through ABSS, talking about what it means to provide public service. And the idea that none of us take this as a job. This is what we do on top of everything else we do in life, whether we're a parent, whether we're a business owner, whether employer and all of our other careers. And the idea that we are all charged in Burlington at some point in our lives to take up the mantle of public service in many forms and fashions. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve our community as I have over the last six years. It's been an honor to work with you all. And I look forward to handing over the reins to Jim as he leads our community forward. So thank you all. That's, that's my comments for this evening.
Mayor, let me thank you for your service for the last six years. I know it's, it's time consuming. And I just personally want to thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
And thank you for the amount of time that you put in, awful lot of ribbon cuttings and events that you participated in. And I really appreciate what you did and the connections that you made with people in the community.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you backing me up on those. I tallied them up the other day and I was pushing 4,000 events over six years. So it took a lot of time, personal time to show up at that many different events and meetings throughout our community. So, but thank you for being there on the, the days I couldn't make it.
Ian, this is Bob Ward. I'd like to thank you as well. I know you've taken a lot of time and you're right. You know, doing this kind of work is on top of everything else you do and it's, it's not altogether easy sometimes, as you just alluded to, to make all the schedules work and you have to, I mean, it's sometimes it's a task in itself just to make the schedule mesh. But thanks for your service and look forward to seeing you in the future at some point.
Thank you, council member.
Yeah, thank you as well, Ian. It's, it's always interesting in my career in public service, what you learn or the things that you acquire from being around others that we've worked with colleagues. As we move forward, it'll be the eighth different makeup of council that I have, have had the pleasure to serve with. And you always learn something and I appreciate the things that you have taught directly or indirectly. And thank you for what you've done and how engaged you've been, certainly with the community events in order.
Thank you, council member. Again, thank you all for the opportunity. As, as a young leader, I've learned a lot from you all and your, your many years of experience for our community and your many different roles that you each have held. So thank you. Any other council comments this evening? All right, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed? City council is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you back here in December.
Hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving. Good night.
Yes. Good night.